Coming up, a conversation with Roland Rainey, candidate for at-large Colorado Springs City Councilor.
This is 6035 Media.
Casting an informed vote is your right and your duty as a citizen. I'm Brian Grossman, Executive Editor at 6035.
And I'm Shelley Rohr, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters at the Pikes Peak Region.
We're teaming up to bring you conversations with the candidates in the April 2023 Colorado Springs City Election. So this interview is both an episode of the new 6035 Vote Podcast.
And the League's Making Democracy Work Podcast. So let's get to it. So Roland, we just wouldn't mind opening up with just a little bit about yourself. Tell our listeners, you know, kind of who you are and why you're here.
Okay. Well, first off, thank you very much for having me here today. I'm pretty excited. Not just to be here, but to actually get the message out to the voters on why I believe I'm a great candidate for them to go out and vote for. So a little bit about myself. Right now, I'm a retired Air Force veteran, 26 and a half years in the military, was a started out enlisted, then became an officer through the ROTC program at Colorado State University. So right up the road there in Fort Collins. That's why I graduated in 2003. From there, combat veteran also did some time in Bagram, Afghanistan. But in parallel, ironically, throughout my military career, I've also had a variation of other activities. I was an entrepreneur. I started my own business right here in Colorado Springs. Also taught political science, international relations off duty. So I would do my military work during the day and then at night I would actually go teach at Colorado State University Pueblo. There was a campus right here in town, Continuing Education, where I taught political science and international relations. Big time volunteer here in the Springs. Currently on the Board of Directors for the Colorado Springs Rural Affairs Council. I'm on the Board of Directors for Banning Lewis Academy School Board. Also, I was the Vice Chair for the El Paso County Citizens Outreach Group, working with the county fair and so forth. And also as a Commissioner on the Judicial Nominating Commission also. So as you can tell, I'm very well versed in the city, understanding all the intricate pieces of it. But more importantly, just getting the word out to listening to the citizens, right? Getting my word out, my message on why I think I'm a valuable candidate, but also listening to their concerns. Because at the end of the day, that's what it all boils down to, is what are they concerned about? What is going to help them in their quality of life? Been living here 14-plus years. I can tell you, I love this place, the outdoors. I'm a big time fisherman. I love fishing. I love camping and ATVing. So I'm an outdoorsy guy. So I mean, every aspect about me is Colorado Springs.
Thank you.
All right, Roland, we'll get to some specific questions. First one has to do with development and water. What's your stand on the 128% water rule for extending water and other utilities to flagpole annexed developments?
Yeah, so this question, thank you very much for that one. And this one is huge, right? This is something that's the hot button right now, is the hot topic. Because we're trying to figure out from a future standpoint, with the growth of our city at the exponential rate that it is growing, you know, do we have enough water to supply us for future on ends? When I look at the 128 that City Council recently voted on, and because it is going to be a change in ordinance that requires a second vote. With that being said, I actually think this is the right direction to go in. And the reason why is beforehand, before annexing any type of land, there was no specified, I guess you can say a number, a specified number on what type of utilities are required, what type of level water is required. So at least identifying before annexing anything, hey, this is the number that we're hoping is going to be in this arena, I think is a great thing. I think it gives us an opportunity to peel back the onion, to make sure that whatever we're invested in, it's something that's going to benefit the city for years on end. But I think this water conversation is just not there. And that's something else during my campaign you're going to hear a lot about. It's not just about putting restrictions in place or identifying a specific number. We got to start looking at other second and third order effects when it comes to water. Of course, there's another significant endeavor that includes potentially one of the largest in decades trans diversion of water in the mountain region, specifically Eagle County, to Aurora and Colorado Springs. Where are we at on that right now? Is that something that we need to maybe put a little bit more investment into, maybe a little bit more research into? Also, there is an entire endeavor right now to do another transversion of water to Lake Powell and Lake Mead. Now, I understand the reason behind that, and that is because those two arenas are really huge for hydroelectricity that, you know, extends power to millions of homes. However, the drought that we're in, the issues that we're facing right now here in Colorado and Colorado Springs, when it comes to water, what does that look like for us? You know, are we going to be, I guess, subject and almost hurting ourselves by transversion water more out of the state than into our arena? So I think oftentimes when we talk about water, we're looking at the here and now. But what I would like us to do is look at the second and third order effects. And I think the current City Council did a great step forward by putting a task force in place to really start looking at the issue in a more in-depth manner and not just on the surface.
Okay, thank you. Shelley?
So my question also is about water. It's kind of a big issue. And you may have already kind of answered it with your previous one on my second part, but it's two-pronged. We waste a lot of water with regards to landscaping in three ways. We can waste at a resort with a broken sprinkler that doesn't get fixed for multiple days, or a golf course that just needs that beautiful green grass that's city-owned, right? Or, or in the instance of my neighbor who decides to plant Kentucky bluegrass, right? A lot of water, 78% is wasted. How can we do better with that with regards to in that aspect? And then also, should the city consider extending water and/or utilities to subdivisions that are located outside the city that might never be annexed, but being as part of that regional water provider? Should we look at that kind of a plan? And what, how would you look at that?
Ah, great question. So to answer the first part of your question, I think it goes back to education. Oftentimes when we put or even start looking at water restrictions because of the neighbor who plants the Kentucky, you know, bluegrass, or, you know, the extra amount of water utilized, maybe at a golf course or whatever have you, you know, what are the economic, you know, impacts there? I think that's one aspect. I think education is another aspect. But also, you know, are we providing any incentives for folks to maybe do a different style of landscaping that does not require a lot of water usage? I'm starting to see a little bit of that around town where a lot of folks are not putting down sod anymore. They're landscaping their yards to, you know, look more, I hate to say desert-y, but a lot of rock formations, a lot of soil formations, not necessarily a lot of sod. So I think some folks are moving themselves in that direction, but we just have to help. We have to help the citizens through education, but also making sure that we're providing incentives for folks to go in that direction also. The second part of your question, when you talk about annexing, I think one of the biggest things that we have to really look at is what's the economic impact? Any land that we're looking at annexing, does it have the support that's required? Does it already have utility support structure already in place? And if it doesn't, what is it going to require from an infrastructure investment standpoint? When you start looking at those things, then I think a better decision can be made. When you're looking at any part of, especially on the water side of the front, if you start annexing or at least extending water out to those areas that have not been annexed, or maybe might be considered to be annexed in the future, well, what is the current infrastructure that's going to require that, let's say, piping to go out to those areas? Is there going to be any type of renovation that's going to be required? Is there going to be any type of updates on the actual plumbing itself to go out to that region? And if there is, who's going to pay for that? Is that going to be levied on the citizens? And I don't think we want to do that. I don't think we want to put another tax or anything on our citizens just to annex or have the ideal of potentially annexing something in the future that may not even come to fruition. So that's something that we have to really consider and take a look at, is before we even think about going that direction, what's going to be the economic impact? What's going to be the investment impact? And is there a timeline associated with it? Because that's one thing we don't want to do, is continually pour in money over years to something that may not ever get annexed in.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Roland, this question is a private property rights question. Where do you stand on accessory dwelling units being allowed in single-family residential areas?
So that one is a hot topic also, because I think on the surface, when people tend to look at or think about ADUs, they think about, well, hey, someone is going to build an extension onto their property, and that's going to make, you know, the neighborhood look awful, or potentially do something to property value. I look at it differently. What I'm looking at is, there's a lot of families here that are struggling because of inflation. Could that extra rent help? When you're talking about, you know, maybe an attic or a basement, or maybe you do have some type of attached garage that you can't turn into a living establishment, can you actually earn any money off of that to put money in your pockets? Also, there's families here in the Springs, and I talked about this actually last night, you know, I would like to see families thrive right here in Colorado Springs and not move away or not move out of the state. But in order to do that, sometimes families love to live as a unit. So that generational build of a family unit, sometimes that helps with ADUs. So ADUs are not a bad thing. It's right now where we're currently at. I mean, of course, affordable housing is another issue. And for some family members that can't afford to get out and get their own apartments and maybe need to stay with mom and dad or whomever for an extended period of time, maybe they can rent out those ADUs. So I think there's benefits there before we immediately start talking about, you know, what it may do to the optics of a neighborhood. And from what I've seen so far, because we've got great citizens here, some of the ADUs or some of the attached units that I've seen, they're beautiful. I mean, they don't look rundown, or people really take the time to invest. Because I think the people here in the city also understand what it means to have great property value. So I think we have to make sure that we don't just stovepipe that topic, that we look at both sides on that one and look at the benefits, especially in this inflationary time.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks, sir. So my question also about housing. I live over on the west side, corner of, close to Fillmore and Centennial, right? We've got some new places going in that are averaged 400 to 500,000 for a townhome, right? So how do you propose to address the city's affordable housing crisis? Or some, in some instances, affordable housing attainability?
Yes. Whether you call it a crisis or attainability, right, it is still an issue, right? And I would say right out of the gate on affordable housing, I definitely understand that costs are rising. But I also want to make sure that there's a clear understanding, this is not one person in the city who made the decision, or one developer who made the decision that, oh, I'm going to raise all the prices. The answer to that is no. This is a market-driven issue. This is not a Colorado Springs issue, or Denver issue, or a specific city issue. This is a market-driven issue. Now, right here in Colorado Springs, we actually have entities to help build affordable housing. And that goes through the HUD. The HUD have mechanisms in place to work with developers to actually build affordable housing. So I think that mechanism is already in place. They will continue to do great work to get us to affordable housing. But I want to make sure that we all understand that this is really a market-driven issue, not, you know, one individual who might be driving a particular price.
Thank you.
Roland, public safety. CSPD, Colorado Springs Police Department is short, depending on the numbers you look at, anywhere from 50 to 100 officers from authorized strength, all while crime and traffic fatalities are on the rise. What would you do about public safety and specifically the police department?
I am so happy you asked that question, because that's not, that's my number one platform topic. And the reason why it's important, not just to me, but to our citizens, is because when you look at the crime rate here in Colorado Springs, I often hear this comment all the time, this place doesn't look the way it used to look. Well, when you look at population growth, when you start looking at a culmination of things that have led to us having a manpower issue at CSPD. So let's, for the, for the audience out there, let's culminate that for a second. So initially, we have here in Colorado, Police Reform Bill that's passed. And in many aspects of it, doesn't necessarily give the protections to our police officers that they need to go out and get the job done on our behalf, so we can live safely in our neighborhoods. Then we have a local shooting, the Devon shooting. Then on top of that, you have George Floyd murder and protests all across this nation, to also include Colorado Springs. You have jail realignment, and then you throw COVID on top of all of that. That all happened in a three-to-four-year span. And if you don't put support behind our police officers, and you don't give them the protections they need to go out and get the job done, just like anyone else, if I was working with you in a job, and you're my boss, and you're not showing me the support that I need to have to get the job done, what do you think I'm going to do? Probably going to go out and start looking for new employment. And that's what a lot of law enforcement members did. They left the police force, either they left Colorado Springs and went elsewhere, or they actually left law enforcement as a total and now looking for other careers. Because our local government, when they see that, they're looking for someone to have their back, support them in order to get the job done. And that's something that we have to really look at is, you know, I keep hearing, oh, we have a recruiting issue. It's not necessarily we're having a recruitment issue. It's a culmination of things that led to a population of professionals to think, I don't want to be in this profession anymore, because I don't have the support I need to be effective in it. So I think it's more of a messaging that we have to do. When we're talking about recruits, when we're talking about folks in the police academy, we have to ensure them, as long as they're doing the job 100% to the letter of the law, they're always going to have our back. They should never have to go out fearing whether or not their supervisor or someone in their local government is going to leave them out on the whims, because they're trying to keep, you know, something in the political lanes. We have to make sure that they have that support. A couple of things I have on my agenda that I would love to see happen. I think we're doing a good job. I think the Chief of Police is taking the necessary actions to make sure that we have more police academies throughout the year. But I think we also got to look at going out and having conversations at colleges, having conversations at military installations with military police and law enforcements out there, making sure that for job fairs, that we're really putting a good effort, community security units, putting a good effort out there to actually bring in great folks to get the job done on our behalf. Because safety in this city is of the utmost importance. Our homicide rates, if you go back and look from 2001 to 2013 till now, homicide rates are just astronomical compared to where they were basically single digits, you know, maybe a decade ago. Also, car thefts, we're leading the nation in car thefts. Let's put that into perspective. We're leading the nation in car thefts. That makes no sense. And some of the rules that we currently have in place protects the criminal instead of putting them behind bars where they really need to be. So when I look at those type of things, this is not who we are as Colorado Springs. This is not who we are as a community. This is not who we are as people. And it's definitely not who we are as a city. So let's make sure we put the support behind our public safety individuals, especially CSPD. I mean, right now, their authorized in strength is 821. They're operating right now somewhere in a neighborhood of 770 plus. That's not going to get it done. It's minimal manning, basically. And when I say minimal manning, you know, I personally look at it in a different light, because you're talking about officers on shifts, you know, on day shifts, on swing shifts, on mid-shifts. So that number that you think is like, oh, we have enough, no, we actually don't, when you start looking at it from a shift perspective, and how many officers we actually have out on our streets. But I also want to make sure I make this point very clear to the audience. Public safety is huge. And I know oftentimes the counterargument to this conversation is we don't need more police officers, we need more mental health. This is not an "or" conversation. It's an "and" conversation. It's a, we need more officers to give us the safety we need to live the life, the quality of life that we all want here in Colorado Springs. But yes, there are some folks out there that suffer with mental health, drug abuse, broken and fractured families that do need mental health also, mental health services and therapy. So yes, it's an "and", not just an "or".
Thanks, Shelley.
And that kind of takes us into our next question, really, because this is kind of a portion of this population is suffering from mental health issues. How would you address our city's, our homeless issue?
Homelessness. I want to make sure that we all understand homelessness is running rampant here in Colorado Springs. We see it throughout the years. It has grown, it has fluctuated, and you're absolutely right. We've had, you know, members on the street that are suffering from mental illness, drug abuse, as I mentioned before, fractured families. But I also want to make sure that people understand, this is a community issue. Oftentimes, we want to point the finger at CSPD and say, oh, you're not doing enough to eradicate homelessness. Homelessness is not a law enforcement issue. It's a community issue. So what I would like to see is a lot of our community organizations, different shelters, different nonprofit organizations, come together, and whether that is a task force with subsections to go out and figure out ways on how to address these members that are on the street. Look, there are, there are some of our veterans that are on the street. And I can tell you right now, as a military veteran myself, that is something I'm definitely not going to stand for. But I do know that there are some folks that make the decision on their own to be homeless. But that's not just the full picture, right? There are people that come from very fractured homes, abusive homes, where they can't go to another family member. So they found them, find their lives on the streets. And that's something that we have to really look at. But I think this is not a CSPD issue to eradicate for us. This is a community issue. And I would like to see a citywide task force of nonprofits, the mission shelter, to come together and actually start really peeling back the onion on what type of services we can provide, and what type of activities we can put in place to reach some of these homeless members.
So I'm kind of a follow-up to that, because you said rampant. When I think rampant, right, I think we're the 42nd largest city in the, in the United States, pretty close to that. There's a lot of cities that have rampant homelessness issues. So we, we aren't really probably doing what we should in that instance, I guess. But, and dealing with community organizations, and if it's a community issue, then I think we as a community need to step up to the plate a bit more, I guess, from a, not just, not just time and assistance, but compassion and empathy for those that are in that situation. Because there are some that are mental health, there are some that are veterans with PTSD, there are some that are kicked out of their home because of their chosen lifestyles, for whatever reason. So I think from a compassionate community perspective, that would be just kind of my two cents on that, but.
No, you're absolutely right. And I made the comment earlier, when I look at our citizens, when I look at this city, we're a phenomenal city. We're a great city. And we have to make sure that, that any action that we take is reflective of that. And going back to compassion, going back to providing services, pulling community resources together to show that this is a community effort moving forward, and not just one entity trying to solve a massive issue. As you mentioned, this is a problem across our nation. But here in Colorado Springs, I know we have the resources, and I know we have the right people and the right talent to pull together to actually find a resolution, or at least a pathway to look at, you know, how can we better serve that particular community and get them out of homelessness, and put them on a path where they can live the life that we have promised a lot of Americans in this country?
Thank you, sir.
Roland, if you're elected, do you foresee asking voters for any tax increases or new fees?
No, and no. I don't believe there's a reason to. Right now, I think our budget is in a great place. So it's more about really looking at our budget and finding out, you know, is there places, non-essential functions that we're maybe putting money towards that we don't need to, that we can maybe reallocate? Oftentimes, when people talk about budget and taxes and raising taxes, I think one of the things that we have to make sure we step back and look at is, are we putting money in the right places? And if we are, great. But if there are areas that we can actually reallocate, then I think we're the better for it. So oftentimes, I think it's more of an allocation issue than it is a, you know, whether we need, you know, a raise in taxes or not. So you're hearing it directly from me, if I'm on City Council, and I should rephrase that, when I'm on City Council, no, I would not be advocating for any type of tax raise.
Okay. Running out of time, so I'll pass it over to Shelley for the last couple of questions.
So reallocation of funds, right? One easy way, we think, is possibly to move our spring municipal elections that you're currently in the middle of to the fall, whether that's during a school board election year, like an off year, or, you know, a bigger year, 20, you know, your even numbered years, which would help increase voter turnout. And in those years that they do have an election, save approximately $600,000 a year. So one, what are your thoughts on moving it from the spring to the fall? That's the first question. And running for City Council, you understand your pay is $6,250 a year, plus some extra money for when you go to events and, you know, extra education, things like that around the state, and wherever you need to go to do your job. What are your thoughts on raising that pay to a reasonable amount that is inclusive of others who do not have the ability to do this as their only job, like retirees?
Thank you for that question. To go to the first part, I'm very open-minded to the idea of potentially moving the election. Even this particular election, if you look at over the last seven months, you know, we come out of a general election, you go into the holiday season, and immediately right after the holiday season, we're right into another turn of elections, right? And to, to gavenize, to grab people's attention, because who you elect and who you bubble in on the ballot means something. Your voice and your vote means something, and you should cherish that. That's one of our principles here in this nation, is the ability to vote and cherishing that. So I think I would be very open-minded to looking at, how can we better capture folks' attention and get mass participation? One of the things I do fear with local elections, municipal elections, is that you don't get that huge turnout that you really would love to have, and get the attention of the citizens that you really would love to have. With that being said, I would definitely be open-minded to that. To your second part of the question, I am definitely for potentially finding a nice number to pay City Council members. To your very point, right now, you look at $6,000, that's basically a stipend. That's not a pay. It's a stipend. When you look at, you know, county commissioners, or even the mayor's pay, you know, they get paid well to do their job. With City Council, I think one of the things we have to really look at is, if you want a council that is representative of who you are, someone who comes in with a variation of ideas, someone who comes in with some unique perspective, then most of those folks are probably in their prime of their careers, middle age, and not retired. Now, I consider myself an anomaly. I'm 47 years old, I'm retired out of the Air Force, but I got a tremendous amount of energy and a tremendous amount of bandwidth to get this done. Yes, I do have a full-time job right now. I'm a strategic business developer. But with that being said, I still dedicate a lot of time to boards and commissions around the city while also running for City Council. I think if you actually have someone like me who's going to dedicate that type of time and effort, they should be compensated for it also. And to pay someone $6,000 as a stipend, wow, it's a great thank you. When you look at the amount, the extraordinary amount of time that you place on different boards, being on a council, you're assigned, of course, to the Colorado Springs Utilities Board, you're assigned to be a liaison to various boards across the city. It's a lot of time. So I think too often, some folks may get confused at our City Council, they meet, you know, the second and fourth, you know, Tuesday month, and that's it. No, it's definitely not it. That's just regular session. That does not include work sessions. That's That doesn't include being a part or a liaison to other boards and commissions out there. Um, so.
Or being a, you know, your constituents' request for needs in the community.
Yes.
Right? So it's a lot of work.
Responding to emails and meeting with folks and, and going to their place of work or them coming to your office. It's a lot of time and commitment. So I, I do believe we should really take a hard look at that. And I don't believe the citizens would be, um, I, I don't believe the citizens. Would see something misappropriated by that. I think what they will see is that people that are working hard on their behalf are also being compensated simultaneously.
Thank you. And back to your spring elections. We're competing against March Madness. I mean, come on, you're a sports guy. You know that, well, that's your competition. Why we get so low? That's my theory, just a Shelley theory.
Uh, Roland, we're just about out of time. You want to take the last minute or two and wrap up and let voters know why they should vote for you?
Well, no, thank you for that. Uh, and thank you for your time and allowing me to uh, interact with you today. Um, the one thing I would tell uh, folks out there is, these are some unique times. Uh, we've already talked about it. We have water supply issues. We have a manpower issue with CSPD that we really need to tackle and get at. So you can live the quality of life that you need to live with your family and your community. So you can feel safe and your kids can feel safe going to school and you going to work and, and having a great neighborhood. Uh, also, I, I really want us to start looking at tech job opportunities. I want to have an initiative of a Colorado Springs Tech Job Corps. I, I want us to have these big companies come in to look at our citizens. And provide them the advanced knowledge and education. So we can provide a pipeline of employees to those companies. So those companies will be investing in the Springs and in reverse, what are we giving them back? We're giving them a steady stream of competent, well-educated employees to go in to get the job done. Uh, I think this council is definitely uh, in need of some fresh eyes, some fresh perspective, some renewed energy. Uh, and I think I'm the candidate to do that. Um, I think once again, it's the city's responsibility to make sure that we are helping citizens have the best quality of life that they possibly can. That they have safe neighborhoods and that they can thrive and grow their families right here in Colorado Springs. So for me, I look at it as, this is our city. It's their future, but it's my priority. So I think right now, this is the right time. Colorado Springs is definitely the right place, and I'm the right choice for city council.
All right. Thank you, Roland.
Thank you.
And you've been watching or listening to a joint podcast effort of Sixty Thirty Five Media and the League of Women Voters of the Pike Peak Region.
Be sure to follow Making Democracy Work and check out LWVPPR.org for more information regarding our candidate forums in March.
And stay with Sixty Thirty Five Vote to make sure your vote is an informed one. This podcast is produced by Dave Gardner, video directed by Nick Raven. I'm Brian Grossman, executive editor.
And I'm Shelley Rohr, spokesperson for the League of Women Voters. See you next time.
Hi, I'm Dave Gardner.
And I'm Nick Raven.
We're the podcast producers here at Sixty Thirty Five Media.
Sixty Thirty Five Vote is just one of a growing family of hyper-local podcasts that we're creating.
And these are for you, someone who wants to engage fully in your community.
We've got the Sixty Thirty Five, which is a quick, lively recap of the top news stories of the week.
It's my favorite. It's really great and often funny.
I love having you as a guest, actually.
I do too.
And then we have hot takes and streaming breaks, which is a potpourri of news. And commentary about movies, gaming, TV streaming, and just so much more. It's for the youthful heart and, you know, that could be anyone, really.
Yeah, I'm surprised I even really enjoy it because Nick hosts that and he's, he's witty.
Well, and the cool thing is that you can watch both of these podcasts on YouTube.
Or you can listen to them on the go in your favorite podcast app.
And there's a couple more, uh, but you can also visit sixtythirtymedia.org/podcast to see them, browse them, sample them.
And then subscribe to the ones that you like.
And then subscribe to this YouTube channel.
Yeah, and if you really love it all, like we do. Uh, you can just, you can just subscribe to the Sixty Thirty Five Podcast Network podcast. Which is a conglomeration of all the episodes, all the brilliance and humor that emanates from the studio.
Absolutely, and there's a lot of it. So like and subscribe today and go listen to them all or watch them.
What he said. Good, thanks.
Got it?
That wasn't so painful.